Good evening and welcome to the January 2010 Meeting of the Board of Trustees. And at this point, a couple of preliminary matters, and then we will turn to actions taken in closed session. The first preliminary matters to take up involve two friends of this college district and community activists that we have lost since last we met. Many on this board, many in the community I know knew Mary and Ron Young. Ron passed away right before Christmas. I know Trustee Fuentes and I, and maybe a few others, had the opportunity to visit him and Mary in the hospital. It is a great loss to South Orange County. I would ask my colleagues that we adjourn tonight in the memory of Ron Young. And more closely to home, many of you know Trustee Joan Hutter, served on this board for about 12 years. She passed away last week. And on behalf of my colleagues, I send districts condolences, thoughts and prayers to her family. I would ask also that we have the opportunity tonight to adjourn in memory of Trustee Hutter. Her services are this Saturday. And to the college community, I believe the chancellor's office has sent out the information with respect to those services, and we certainly encourage all of you to pay your respects to Trustee Hutter, who we lost about a week ago. The other thing I will tell you is that I believe we have President Burnett has someone in the audience to introduce to us today, which I hope I haven't caught you by surprise, but let's go ahead and take care of that now.
President Wagner, Board of Trustees, Chancellor. If you recall, I believe it was at the last board meeting, I think it was Trustee Padberg, who had mentioned when we had shown the beautiful from City of Mission Viejo of the picture that was photographed, that was taken of our Veterans Memorial that we're constructing, and once again, the plug, April 29th is the dedication, everybody. You had asked us to come and meet the person who was responsible for it. Well, I'm very thrilled tonight to introduce, and how appropriate that we have a lot of these film students here today at the same point. I'm very pleased. And Stephen, thank you for coming up already. This is Stephen Kraut. Stephen Kraut is a Saddleback student. Stephen Gradhaus has a different, interesting background. He actually has a degree from USC, but he came back to Saddleback to actually get an education. Is that right? By the way, I'm an SC alum, so I just realized what I just said here, and Don Wagner's laughing, Mr. Bruin over there. I didn't mean it that way. What I meant was...
Hell, I took it.
He told me he came back to actually get some skills in the industry that he wants to work in, which is film and production. And he came to Saddleback, which is one of the best programs out there. So that was very wonderful to hear about Stephen. But what's also great about Stephen is he's come back and he's in the program. He's been here about a year and a half. He is actually putting together our documentary on the Veterans Memorial Project, which he's still working on, and he'll be here working on it for many more months. So Board of Trustees, I just wanted to bring, as you requested, Stephen Kraut, who took this beautiful picture, who the City of Mission Viejo has used extensively through their Thankfulness campaign. And we're going to, of course, use this photo going forward as well with all of our efforts and things with our Veterans Memorial. So would like to introduce and acknowledge to you Mr. Stephen Kraut.
One more?
Yeah. Look at the picture up. How's that?
Well, thank you for recognizing me. I really appreciate that this evening. Just wanted to thank the school and thank the Communication Arts Department, because they're really the ones that have helped me find my new passion. You know, I worked in the film, or I should say, I worked in the corporate world for about seven years and was laid off and kind of got caught up in this recession. And Saddleback College has really been a true inspiration for finding a new path. And I'm really looking forward to opportunities ahead. In fact, I may even be able to teach because of this in Arizona, a film production class. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that and looking forward to the completion of the Veterans Memorial.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right, we will turn now to the clerk to read out a list of actions taken in closed session.
In the closed session, the board approved... is the mic on? Okay. In the closed session, is it on?
It's on.
In the closed session, the board approved an agreement with Dr. Mather pursuant to which Dr. Mather's service as the district chancellor shall end on June 30th, 2010, and provides for his retirement from the district effective June 30th, 2011. The board's vote on this matter was as follows. In favor, Trustee Wagner, Padberg, Jay, Williams, and Milchiker opposed Trustees Fuentes and Lang.
Thank you. At this point, we invite you to stand for an invocation to be led by Trustee Lang and to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Milchiker.
Yes, thank you. My remarks this evening are intended to further honor and remember our former colleague and trustee Joan Hutter, who, as President Wagner has indicated recently, passed away. Joan, in addition to being a wonderful trustee during her tenure on this board, was also a good friend, a client, and really a role model. She served on this board from 1985 to 1998, representing the Tustin and Irvine areas. She was also, during her career, an athletic director at Cotella High School, a teacher and a coach. I know several of her daughters among her six kids, and as I recall, she also had a granddaughter who participated in athletics at IBC. Joan was a very thoughtful, always very thoughtful in her remarks, polite to a fault, but a forceful advocate for issues that she felt passionate about. Her funeral is this Saturday at St. Paul's Lutheran Church in Orange, as Trustee Wagner mentioned. Please join me this evening in remembering Joan and the wonderful service she provided to this district and her constituency. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lang. I remember Trustee Hutter fondly. We were elected at the same time, and she was certainly a wonderful advocate for this district and thought of students first at all times. Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our great country. I pledge allegiance to the flag...
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, we'll move to public comments. I have quite a number of folks looking to speak, and I'll just take these in the order that they were given to me. And I'll call several off, and if you hear your name, please come on up to the podium to keep this moving along. And I'll begin with Dustin Stinit, who I understand may take a little more than the allotted two minutes, but since you've got a pinch hitter here, I'll make it quick and you can just go ahead and speak to make your remarks. That's quite all right. You'll have the time you need to make your remarks. And we will follow that with Mr. Musselman and then Mr. Robbins.
Mr. President, Trustees, Mr. Chancellor, thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening. Instead of telling you that which you already know, which is the importance of the Film and Television Production Department to this college, its students, and the community at large, I'd like to focus on the issue that has prompted this discussion, the standards to which those departments are to be held. The report repaired by the department makes it clear that they hold themselves to, and in some cases, higher than the standards set forth by the FCC for basic cable television, the MPAA for cinema, and that standard for both is PG-13. What is problematic is that in some ways, these standards, particularly those from the MPAA, fall somewhere between cut and dry and vague. There are those on this board and in this community who would prefer it if the student productions didn't take advantage of the wiggle room often allowed for in Hollywood, and I agree. However, as I'm sure you know, legislating matters of taste is something that is at best difficult. And the proof of that is the simplistic, if not realistic, solution that had been floated early on in this process, which is, let's close the department. That will solve everything. We live in a society with no protections against being offended. As viewers, our power is in the remote control of the television sets. Also, it's important that to remember that with no or even just few exceptions, the students in this department are, in fact, adults. The notion that their taste in material should be held to a standard of PG or even G, as I have heard, is an insult to them and their intended audience, and it puts them at an artistic disadvantage in national film festivals. Now, to the students and the faculty of these departments, you might bring up your First Amendment rights this evening, but you have to remember that the freedom of expression guaranteed by the First Amendment is not absolute. That freedom comes with responsibilities, and often that responsibility is to those who hold the purse strings. Any good executive producer is going to tell you that. In the community college system, the holders of the purse are the taxpayers and the members of this board are their elected representatives. You have a responsibility to operate within the boundaries that they set. And if you find that objectionable, no one here is stopping you from exercising your freedoms somewhere else. U.S. Supreme Court Justice Stuart Potter is famous for writing in regards to defining pornography, is that he knows it when he sees it. Now, some have mocked Justice Potter for what they believe was a less-than-clear point. On the contrary, that point was crystal clear, with simple common sense. When the MPAA says that a film with PG-13 rating can use the F-word as many as four times, they were referring to feature-length film, not a five or 15-minute short produced at a community college. To hide behind these vague standards and to claim a right to freedom of expression is exactly the lack of common sense that Justice Potter was referring to, as are some of the members of this board in our community. You also have a responsibility to yourselves as artists. Making films with gratuitous language and imagery that is included only for its shock value is easy. Anybody can do it. Frankly, it's below the standards that I expect in this department. So I believe that if you apply common sense and artistic integrity to your work, you'll not find any legitimate objections from this board or your community. And please don't forget that the Film Department is part of the fine arts. An artist is someone who can look into a world, whether real or imagined, and give their audience an image of that world. Don't sell your audience, or more importantly, yourselves, short. Thank you for your time, attention, and consideration.
Thank you, sir. We have Mr. Musselman, followed by Mr. Robbins.
Unfortunately, Mr. Robbins had to adjourn to class.
So who are you?
I am Corey Musselman.
Welcome.
Just letting you know.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, Board members and fellow Communication Arts Departments and other departments as well. My name is Corey Musselman. I've been a student here at Saddleback for three years now. And three years ago, I was denied from every school I applied to in state, and I swallowed my pride and said, "I'll just go to Saddleback College." It's honestly one of the best mistakes I could ever have made in my life. I've learned here more than, I would say, if I could get a bachelor's degree here, I certainly would. I feel like I know half of what some master's degrees pay for, about up to four times or five times the price that we pay here. I've been treated with professionalism and encouragement from staff and fellow students themselves. They've really inspired my dreams as well as I hope to inspire theirs. And in all honesty, I love this program. And any major changes to it, it hurt, but I'd feel I'd be crushing the students, but... that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Gordon Spencer to be followed by Nicole Perziosi. Mr. Spencer?
Thank you for the time. I'm Gordon Spencer with Cox Channel 3. I'm here just in support of the television and communication program. Support because we've had a great relationship over the years with the program, so I wanted to come help speak on their behalf. We use interns from Saddleback College all the time to help us out, which is great. We've hired probably a third of those students because of the great creativity. And just based on what's being discussed, according to the National Cable Television Association, which is our, as a cable company, primary trade association, there's no general rating that applies to cable programming. Rather, the program is rated on a program-by-program basis, in much the same way movies are rated. So I guess the simple statement would be, I think it's better to inform viewers by letting them know what program they're about to see, rather than restrict producers on what they can produce. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have Ms. Perziosi here. All right. And next up is Olivia Bain, to be followed by Deborah Connor. And after that, Mark Payne.
I'm Olivia Bain. I'm a student here at Saddleback College, and although I'm not in the Communications Arts Department, when I heard about the issue that's come up because of a coming-out story, I felt that it was indicative of a variety of issues in the school that really do need to be addressed, not the least of which being the homophobia that's very evident by the fact that this is even a discussion. The fact that this came out because a documentary was made about a woman coming out, as opposed to gratuitous violence or sex, shows that it's not about the rating, it's about the content and about the ideas it might present. Good filmmaking, like any form of good art, is inherently provocative, and to expect any less of the students of this college is doing them a disservice. I hope that no changes are made to the Film Department, and I feel that an effort to limit the school's channel to a rating of PG is bordering on censorship and really unnecessary. As someone else has pointed out, the vast majority of students here are adults. We can view films that aren't just PG. We can view films that are PG-13 and rated R, and in fact, such films are frequently shown in classes here or discussed. Books dealing with a range of topics that would easily be rated R are assigned reading. It's unfair to apply different standards for this one department. Thank you.
Ms. Connor, followed by Mark Payne. And Mr. Payne, if you could come on up, so you're ready to go when we're done. And then Jacqueline Zimbalist.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. My name is Stormy, and I'm a former film student at Saddleback College. And I feel that restricting the film, the college film students, by saying that they can only make PG films is not only stifling and crushing their creativity, but I think it's unconscionable. And my question to you is, where does it stop? Is it stopped in the writing class where a student writes a story about the drug experience he's had? Or maybe a student designs a dress in the fashion department, and somebody feels it's too racy? You know, where are we going to put limits? You know, we're going to move on to the music classes and the photography classes and say, "We don't like the kind of music they're making," or the pictures they're taking? I could go on and on, but I won't. I'd like to close by saying that Saddleback College is comprised of adults, not 12-year-olds, and that requesting the Film Department limit students to only making PG films is not only ridiculous, I believe it's un-American. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Mark Payne. I live in Rancho Santa Margarita. I have been a schoolteacher in the Tustin Unified School District for the past 16 years, and of 11 of those years, I have taught video productions. And my students have won numerous awards nationally. My students go onto two different high schools where they too have visual arts programs in film and broadcasting. After that, many of my students go on to a four-year university, but many cannot afford that financial responsibility in places like USC or Chapman Film Schools. Currently, I have five former students attending those schools in that very field. Excuse me. The students who cannot afford it have the greatest opportunity in the world, right here at Saddleback College in Communication Arts, in the film schools specifically. Teachers here are extremely well-qualified to teach the ins and outs of the real world, making the students more than ready for everything that's going to come their way, due to the hands-on nature of these classes. Last summer, I attended a video boot camp here, and I had the best time of my life here. I learned so much in one short week. Hiro Konishi and Mark Kuhman and others were amazing at sharing their knowledge in the film and TV industry. I have also since then applied what I've learned in my daily teachings back at Pioneer Middle School in Tustin. I rave about this school to my students as a possible choice for them when they reach their college age. Saddleback has what I call a diamond in the rough here, and I implore the board not only to be proud of it, but continue to fund it, to give these students a means to become leaders in the industry. I'm hoping that this school is here, and this particular apartment, not only for my students, but my two sons. Since I'm a public school teacher, I can't afford much more to send them anywhere else. So thank you, and have a great night.
Jacqueline Zimbalist, to be followed by Dot Leach, and then Patrick Garrity.
Hey, my name is Jacqueline Zimbalist, and I'm currently enrolled in Professor Konishi's documentary class, and I've taken or been involved in assisting with several film classes and student projects here on the campus. As a longtime student of both Saddleback and IBC, I can attest to the high caliber of the film programs here at Saddleback in particular, to rival the programs at Chapman, USC, and UCLA. And I speak to you as both a student and a member of the community and urge the board to deny approval of Agenda Action Item 6.1, limiting Channel 39 and 33 to PG-only broadcasts. The recommendation, if approved, will severely handicap the ability of the college to broadcast student projects without being forced to edit them to resemble some kind of non-controversial mush, and will send an implied message to the other departments on the two campuses, actually, including ATEP, that their materials are subject to, come under the same restrictions, including the life drawing classes here at Saddleback. Classic films that would be deemed inappropriate would include things like The Godfather, could not be shown on 39 under that restriction. You could not show the majority of Fellini movies. You could not show some of the great directors from the 1920s because their material would be deemed totally inappropriate. So I would urge the board, just for future policy, not to accept this as a valid recommendation. Thank you.
Dot Leach, to be followed by Patrick Garrity.
Good evening. I am a former non-traditional student here at the Communications Arts Department. I hold a degree in Broadcast Journalism from the University of Texas. I have reported and anchored for the NBC affiliate in Austin, Texas, and I have worked for the Associated Press. I currently own my own production company here in Orange County. Recently, I learned that the relevance and credibility of the Communication Arts Department here at Saddleback was under some troubling scrutiny, and that attempts to restrict student creativity and productions is being considered. For instance, I understand that there are those who are concerned about the well-being of the audiences who watch some of the college's productions that air on Channel 39 and would impose a rating system. I've watched Channel 39, and honestly, I am confused. Just the other day, I was up rather early in the morning, it was around 5:00, and the shows that I watched included the ballet, a program, an interview program, I believe, called OC Focus, and two student films that could only be described as fantasy. So what needs ratings here? The ballet? I think not. Let's look also, who is the audience on Channel 39? Now, no offense to Channels 39, our Cox Communications. My husband is the Vice President of Communications or Public Affairs and Production over there. So I'm keenly aware of the things that cable can and cannot air. In my hand... oh, let me answer the question. The people who are watching it in the greater numbers are the very people who are sitting here who have written, edited, produced, and sometimes even starred in these productions. It is their opportunity, after so much time, and often putting in a lot of their own money, to see their product aired. So I am asking that the board reconsider any ideas about putting unnecessary restrictions on something that we've already learned from Mr. Spencer, doesn't require ratings on the cable front. And I feel like that there should be more responsibility taken in not restricting the art of communication. Thank you.
Patrick Garrity, to be followed by George Moore, and I believe that's the last speaker on this topic.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. How are we doing tonight? Good. All right. I'd just like to say that I had applied to Chapman College, and I wanted to go there a couple of years ago because it was my dream film school, but I didn't get in oh well. So I decided to go to Saddleback for a couple of years. And my original plan was to do two years of Saddleback and get out, but that wasn't until I discovered the film program. And here, the film program has really opened so many doors to me, and I feel that I've learned a lot. And, excuse me, and I feel that the... I wrote this down. Sorry. Feel that I heavily enjoy and appreciate the Communication Arts Department here at Saddleback, and it's because of the freedoms that we, as a young group of aspiring filmmakers, are granted by professors to guard the content of our films with no depletion of professionalism. And we're all adults here, and we all can see R-rated movies any day of the week. I just think it's a great department, and any changes to be made regarding the content of our films would be very offensive, and it was said, and that's all. Thank you.
I just want to thank the board for this opportunity to speak, and everyone here, as you can see, there's a lot of support for this. But I'd like to let you know, I'm a recent graduate from Chapman University, but before that, I was a student here at Saddleback College, under the Film, Television, Radio Departments. And for you guys to restrict anything that's coming out of this is just going to hinder the game for all these students out here. Everything that I learned here at Saddleback, I took over with me to Chapman. That being said, they gave me positions as teacher aides. I helped the technical departments. I helped their television and film departments. I had students coming to me after the first time meeting me to join their sets, to join their crews, to help them out, and I learned everything here at Saddleback College. Their program is great, and it's already a powerhouse, and if you guys don't realize that, and you guys are willing to change what they already have, it's only going to hurt them in the long run. So please reconsider, and don't stop these kids making these great movies. And to tell you what, I still watch Channel 39, even though it's been, I think, four years now that I've left Saddleback College. So please, help them out. Keep the program strong. Thank you.
I believe that's the last of the requests to speak. Madam Secretary, that's it. All right. Thank you all very much. At this point, we will move to oral reports and begin with the report of Trustee Jay.
No board report this evening.
Thank you. Trustee Williams.
A new report, thank you.
Trustee Milchiker.
I attended the... I'm a member of a statewide committee. It's the Advisory Committee Committee on Educational Services, and we met up in Sacramento. And also, another person on the committee with me is President Glenn Rockmore, that served on the committee. And we essentially put on the Effective Trustee Workshop that was held after that. And it was a very excellent workshop for new trustees and how to learn to be new trustees and how to learn the best way to govern the college. And the final answer to all of it was that every decision that you should make should be for student success, that everything you do should... the overriding reason that you do it is it would promote and help student success. I also have brought a packet from a session on the Brown Act, and I'm distributing it to all the trustees about some of the updates on the Brown Act. And it was put on by our own attorney at the district, Warren Kinsler. So I'm going to distribute it right now. Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Padberg.
Yes, just a brief report of view of the hour. I've attended several Saddleback men and women's basketball games, and the last Tuesday production of the Brass Army Band at Saddleback. Looking forward to IBC's homecoming this Wednesday, and also their astounding inventions on Saturday. That's it.
View of the hour, I'll have no report. Trustee Fuentes.
Respecting the hour, no report.
Trustee Lang.
And did it give me hour no report?
Trustee Bailey.
Right.
All right, very good. At this point, we will turn... oh, I'm sorry, the chancellor's report. My apologies.
I'd like to comment on two items. One, with respect to the spring enrollment in the district, including at all three campuses. The head count is up this term by about 4% district-wide, and the full-time equivalent students is up by a little under 11%. students is up by a little under 11% and the productivity is up by about 8.5%. Secondly, as we all know, that the state budget deficit for 2010-11 is projected at $21 billion. And we're all interested in seeing as to how the state is going to deal with that budget deficit. It's considered to be one of the most difficult budget years and it remains to be seen also its impact upon the South Orange County Community College District. And we are making plans as to how we are going to address it. And perhaps that presentation is coming up momentarily. Thank you.
Let me inquire of the Chancellor, are there any written board requests for reports?
None.
All right. Any requests board members would like to make orally that they can then submit in writing? Very well, seeing none, we will turn to our, oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you. Mr. President, I will present at the next meeting a request that I thought it was worth mentioning now and maybe some thought can be given to it. And that would be for our Human Resources Department to prepare an update of a report that we received some few years ago on the topic of nepotism. Nepotism in the district, you know, spouses, parents and children and those relationships, relationships between management and staff, et cetera. I think that it's probably been at least three years, just by my own recollection, maybe longer than that, since we've seen that report. So I will bring a written request next time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll turn to the discussion items. There are two of them on the agenda for this evening. The first one deals with accreditation and it is Item 4.1. Let me turn it over to the presidents as they make their way to the podium. We'll start with whichever one gets there first. And we'll take it however you gentlemen like.
I appreciate that.
All right. I think we were first anyway.
Due to time as well, I'll try to go through really quickly and you all know that I can. So hold on to your horses here. Real quick, we're all excited today to talk to you, give you an update on accreditation to our board. We're very proud of the work we've done. First, real quick, on accreditation, we have an organization set up and a structure which is full campus-wide. So we have full representation from all of our constituency groups on campus, which of course are our students and our faculty, our staff, and management. We have four standards, which I'm going to talk about in a little bit. We have a steering committee. Obviously, in the end, the report's going to come to me. I will sign, send it off to the Chancellor and the Board of Trustees for their review. Our steering committee, which is really guides the overall process at Saddleback, this is the committee members you have here. I'd like to particularly mention, since they're here tonight, the two co-chairs of our steering committee, of course, are Dr. Rajan Verdin, our Vice President for Instruction, and Dr. Bob Cosgrove, our Academic Senate President. Standard one, as you might recall, is institutional mission and effectiveness and includes two components, mission and improving institutional effectiveness. We have our standard one committee members are here, as you can see. The chair is led by Professor Diane Pastelacy. Standard two, you might recall, is student learning programs and services. The three components of that are instructional programs, student support services, and library and learning support services. The committee, as you see, it's a very large standard, I might add, and that is led by Professor Anthony Tang and he is the chair of that. Standard three is resources, which the components are human resources, physical resources, technology, and financial. That is led by, no surprise, Carol Hilton, our Director of Fiscal Affairs, and her large committee. Finally, standard four is leadership and governance, and that deals with decision-making roles and processes, as well as board administrative organization. Here's the committee here. It's led by Dr. Carmen Dominguez. And once again, I'll take this opportunity to thank Trustee David Lang for serving on that standard. Real quick on our update here, we started back in spring, if you recall. That's how long we've been working on it, it's almost a year now. And we began analyzing standards and reviewing the past self-study reports, our progress reports. We reviewed the prior college survey. In fact, we developed a new college survey for Saddleback College, which we believe will be setting a standard now for many, many years to come, if not decades. We distributed the college survey and received the results back. In the summer, we prepared, actually getting ready for the fall, which I'll talk about in a second. And we held college-wide meetings during the summer and analyzed the results we got from the survey, drafted summary, the standards, started to get together and started working on it, and started to commence the self-study process. Now we're up to the fall. We conducted in-service and college-wide meetings, beginning with the first week of school back, actually. We disseminated all of the survey results that we received to the campus. The standards started working very hard and completing their drafts, which they gave to us in November. And then they edited the first drafts in December. And then just a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks before we left for the winter break, we distributed the first draft of the self-study right on time and on schedule. And right now, we got back here and we preparing for spring and service back in the fall. Well, here we are, now it's spring. We conducted in-service, college-wide meetings. In fact, we had it on Tuesday of in-service, we called it Super Tuesday, Super Accreditation Tuesday for our campus, had all-day meetings and had over 100 people and half faculty that attended. We discussed the recommended changes with the campus. We expect to complete the second draft report once we receive feedback from everybody that we've sent out to the campus, get that report done in February. We're going to edit it in May and we're going to present to you our third draft, which will be the first time you see the first draft in May. And then summer comes along, we're going to edit the third draft after we get comments from our campus and if there's any back, feedback from all of you. We're going to present the final report to the board in June. We're going to publish and distribute it at that point. We're going to get the signatures from all of us and we get, start working for the accreditation of Team Visit, which is going to be in fall 2010. We're going to prepare by, of course, having trial runs and mock questions. We're going to spiff up the campus, we're going to do all kinds of things. We expect the visit, hopefully, both IVC and ourselves to visit in October 11th through the 14th. We expect the preliminary findings to be on the last Friday of that week, which will get a little indication of how we've done. And then final action letters usually will come from the SACGC on February 2011. And of course, we're going to have a real clean bill of health. And thank you very much for all of your support. And I want to very much thank our campus, in particular, our faculty, our classified staff, our Academic Senate, our students, of course, and of course, the management team. And now on to my esteemed colleague.
Perfect. Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to address the board and the Chancellor on where we are on our accreditation self-study process. First of all, our steering team is composed of a wide range of individuals here, going from trustees to district representations to faculty, staff, and administrators that are steering this process. Forgot to mention a student, there are two in the corner. Now, what we've done is, the reason that we have nine task forces and all shown here, I don't intend to read everybody, but each of the standards actually have subsections. And so it became important to rather than have one team that would be on standard one, one on two, three, and four and such, we've actually created some additional expertise to focus more in detail on those subsections. And each of those are shown here in order. Again, a full spectrum of campus representatives that participate on this, including our students. Now, in terms of where we were, so in fall of 2009, we began working and have completed all of this. First of all, is the compliance with the eligibility requirements, usually the very first thing that you do in a self-study, usually occurs right at the beginning of a self-study report. We have completed standard one, as you see here, standard two C, and standard three in resources. Now, for this particular semester in spring, we are working on standard two. Standard two A is actually completed already, actually two B, and then we're also working on standard four at this time. The process that we're using is that we've gone, as you see here, through a series of all campus reviews. As materials are completed, they are posted, they're available to the entire campus for review. We're planning on a final college-wide review in May. By that time, we'll have all of those pieces completed that I just talked about a moment ago. And then we plan for your review, two opportunities, one in May and one in June. And then we'll be shooting for publication in August. And so in our final steps, again, being prepared to mail our document with your approval, August 16th, 2010. And then during the August-September period, as my colleague had mentioned, we're going to be preparing for our visit, getting the campus ready, looking appropriate, but more importantly, getting the team room assembled with all of the appropriate evidence and documentation that they will need so they don't have to hunt for things. Usually doesn't make the teams very happy. Speaking of teams, here's the IVC softball team, quite an accomplishment for standard four. Thank you very much and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. And questions for either of our presidents? All right. Seeing none, gentlemen, thank you both. And the next discussion item is how districts are planning and adjusting to accommodate state budget cuts. And it looks like the Deputy Chancellor is on the hot seat for that one.
Several months ago, Trustee Fuentes asked that we have an opportunity for the board to discuss some of the strategies that other community college districts in the state are having to implement as a result of the difficult budget times that everyone understands we're having. Some board members saw some of this information at the Chancellor's opening session. Some of this is new, some of it not. It shows what other districts, I think the value here is what are other districts having to do. None of these strategies are particularly creative. They're the same things that districts have done in every district over time, every time there's a financial crunch. But it's maybe useful to look to see what others are doing now. This district happens to be fortunate, we have a very strong property tax base and so we're behind the other districts. We haven't had to implement some of the strategies that others have done. If this goes on long enough, we could be there. So, anyway, that's the purpose of going through these. There. There were, of the 72 community college districts, 49 responded to this survey that was done by, what was it, College of Sequoias. So that's not a bad return. Usually, you never get 100%, so that was pretty good. So here's some of the strategies. Spending general fund reserves. 70% of the other districts in the state said they're spending reserves in order to balance their budgets. And this district, we haven't had to do that. 57% said that they've eliminated or reduced their spending in new technology. We have done that. So there, in this year's budgets, there were reductions to what colleges have had to spend in past years in technology. 92% have reduced course offerings in the fall and spring. 90% are planning for summer. We haven't reduced course offerings in this district. 92% have said that they're increasing class size. In our district, we have also increased class size. We're filling the classes much faster and better than we have in the past. There's also a high demand, which is helping us do that. 98% have reduced adjunct faculty. And in this district, we have reduced adjunct faculty also. 98% have reduced hourly employees. We have done that also. 94% have reduced student employees. We've had to do that also. 48% have implemented hiring freezes. We have not done that. 89% said that they've had hiring frost, which means whenever there's an opening, an evaluation is made to determine whether it's important to fill that position now or can it be held to a later date. When you first look at that, it looks like, my gosh, that's more than 100% of the districts are reporting on those. But I have a feeling that what happened is that some of them that said that they're having a hiring freeze also said they had a frost. It's hard to explain, they didn't give us an explanation. 16% of the districts have negotiated pay reductions. And we haven't done that in our district yet. 26% have increased employee contributions to health benefits. We haven't done that. 12% have frozen step and column movement of employees on salary schedules. And we haven't done that. With regard to employee layoffs, 30% of the respondents said they're planning to lay off faculty this spring. 23% say they're planning to lay off classified employees this year. And so far, we have no layoffs planned. These without pay, we took this to be the same thing you're reading about in the paper as being a furlough. And 10% say they have implemented leave without pay for faculty, 15% for classified. We haven't done that. Another cost-saving measure is in retirement incentives. 27% say that they're working on a retirement incentive for faculty, 27% for management, 36% are working on incentives for classified employees. So far in our district, there's been no movement towards that. In categorical programs, this is where lots of reductions have been made throughout the state because of the state cuts in categorical. 98% have reduced services to students and we have reduced services to students. 98% have reduced staff expenditures in their categorical programs and we have also. 100% have reduced non-staff expenditures, which sort of makes sense, probably supplies and equipment and different things. And we have also. 84% have had a partial backfill of categorical programs with their general purpose money and we have done some of that also. And 23% said that they are eliminating faculty parity pay, which is a specialized categorical program. And we haven't done that. The next thing that I have here, and I'll leave it up to you to see whether you want to go through all this or whether you just want to read it or you want to discuss some of what we've already talked about, so, because this might take a while, that's the only reason I'm mentioning that.
Well, let's start through it. I mean, I know we've got the PowerPoint up here, but I think it's the first chance we've ever had to have seen it, so let's go through it. Quickly.
All right. First of all, let me say that ATEP and the colleges and the district have been working on all kinds of ideas of what they can do to save money or be more efficient. Hopefully both, but not necessarily. And included here is just a list of what the presidents of the colleges and the provost and the district, we thought are maybe some of the more important ones that they wanted to highlight. In ATEP, they reduced trash collections to, and that gets down to very basics, doesn't it? Trash collections to fewer days per week, eliminated the printing of the class schedule and doing it online, eliminated reclassified positions. At Irvine Valley College, they stopped mailing class schedules. They, in the area of maintenance, they replaced some of their In the area of maintenance, they replaced some of their inefficient micro turbines with more efficient chiller systems to save electricity. They're using more drought-resistant plants to save the cost of water. But, oh, didn't I move it? I'm sorry. They've, at IBC, they've linked the Emeritus program to community education, which allows them to have more credit offerings. They've increased the class fill rates, we discussed that in the earlier part of the presentation. They've cross-trained staff, so that in high-demand times, they don't have to add some additional part-time staff. They've established the online orientation and online advisement, and improved service in missions and records. At Saddleback, they have, there. They've implemented more forms that are done electronically instead of using more and more costly paper. They're also reducing non-credit offerings, eliminating non-essential low-income classes, and they're also doing online orientation of students. They have utility savings also from installing a chiller, an absorption chiller. They've reduced time in counseling appointments and established a student help desk in the student services building lobby, you've probably seen it going through there. In the area of district-wide efficiencies, there's been a savings of $220,000 by switching carriers for the long-term disability program. Avoided a $200,000 cost increase by replacing the life insurance carrier, and also exploring a possible savings of $600,000 by changing the workers' compensation in property and liability carriers. And that's that. So has the board wished to have any discussion?
Let me see, any questions or comments for my colleagues? Seeing none.
I'm, put my light on.
Turn your microphone off. Now push your button. There we go. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you very much. Very first, thank you very much for bringing back this report, which I had initiated, and I'm grateful, because I think that it's very important that all of us as a district realize the crises that is in the state. And we sometimes tend to reinvent the wheel, and what other districts are doing, we can learn from and take lessons from. It was also my initiative to reduce printing costs, to eliminate the scheduling of the printing of the schedule of offerings. I can't quite read a clear update of exactly where it's been eliminated and where it is in the process of being eliminated. If I could get some clarity on that, maybe from the three campus leaders.
Yes, at IBC, we've eliminated printing the schedule. We still do put out a three, folded, three-page brochure. The exact numbers I don't have for you tonight, but it's significant in the savings.
Saddleback is likewise, and you should know for summer scheduling, we won't be sending anything out at all. It'll be purely electronic.
Thank you. Andy?
You've of course followed suit at ATAP with reduction of mailings.
Thank you. Another significant means of cost reduction, which has been floated here and somewhat addressed, has been our advertising budget for the recruitment of students. And of course, in this difficult economic times when young people cannot find jobs, they return to classes, so we have not had a lack of students. We've had a great growth of our students. I'm wondering, did you, in the looking at these figures and this information from the College of the Sequoias, come to any insights on how other districts are treating the issue of recruitment or discouraging recruitment from nearby districts? It's always been here in Orange County, an issue, people from North County go to South County, go to coastal district, go to, cross district lines all the time. Even for a time, we knew that some of the other districts were recruiting in our territory. I've always had the concern that the district, which we represent here as trustees, is funded by property taxes, so our first agenda and first obligation is to the taxpayers of this geographic area and the burden of education of students from our district as opposed to the recruitment of districts of folks who live otherly. Has that issue, did that issue surface? Was there any clarity offered? Was there any insights to what they're doing in San Francisco or San Diego?
No, I didn't see anything about that, and of course, this study wasn't requesting information about that. In answer to your question, though, I would think that just about every other district in the state is discouraging students to the extent that they're not offering, they're reducing offerings, they're cutting classes, they're not trying to bring in new student, additional students, they're trying to put a lid on it because they can't afford to pay for the offerings. So that might be a good question in another year, when there's an incentive to grow, but now there's no incentive.
I think this might also be an opportunity, Mr. President, to turn to our viewing audience and to all of our constituents and residents of the district, to the students who join us here this evening, and to members of faculty and administration, if you have a creative idea how the district can be saving money, to share it with us, to offer your recommendations of where we can cut, where we can save, where we can bring economies to the district for the sake of all of our students and for the sake of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Padberg.
I'd like just a few more clarification points made about the non-credit offerings, and I assume that means that the courses that are considered non-credit, or does that mean that you're not going to have students in a regular credit course that elect to take it on a non-credit status? I'm thinking that this is perhaps limiting tremendously what we can offer to our Emeritus population if we're going to take those courses out completely. Could you just clarify a little more what you mean by non-credit offerings, limiting...
I think we're going to have to rely on the president's staff.
Okay.
They're working on those at the colleges.
Yeah, sure. First of all, as you know, non-credit is a broad description of many types of courses. What they're really saying is the non-credit courses that are either very under-enrolled or courses that can be switched. Emeritus is a great example. We may have a particular program that could be switched to our community education program, or could be switched somewhere else. Or they combine the courses on non-credit. So there's many ways that it comes through, so there's not one sweeping reason or we're trying to cut back on non-credit. But over in the whole picture, of course, Saddleback College in particular actually overall, non-credit comprises a very small, small component of our overall courses.
So you're not really targeting students who go into a credit course and elect to take it non-credit? I know the reimbursement is different for those.
Right. Well, part of the efficiency of our courses is that our non-credit courses are half the rate that you get for a student.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But you can't really restrict a student who wants to take it out on non-credit.
Right.
Yeah, it's exactly the same at IBC. That was a good description. Anything further?
Quick reminder to my colleagues, make sure your microphone buttons are off when you push the request to speak button, otherwise it doesn't show up up here, and I don't know that you're asking to be recognized. All right, thank you, Deputy Chancellor Porter, and thank you all. We are at the consent calendar now. I am going to remove item 5.1. There's a small change to be made to one of the minute, meeting minutes. And let me inquire of my colleagues, any others to poll? Yes, ma'am?
I just want to pull 5.7, 5.8, 5.9, 5.10, but to be seen together, to ask one overarching question on what the change will be, okay?
All right. Any others? And a brief word on item 514, a replacement page was given to us. If you noticed going through it, the original page had the wrong vendor, but the exhibit was the right vendor, and the only change that I understand is there is to correct the name of the potential vendor, so...
Just for clarification, do we need to pull that?
We don't need...
So is it clear, that the audience is clear what we're actually voting for?
We don't need to pull it, but if you'd like to...
I'm going to pull it, so it's clear.
All right, and student trustee?
Item 5.21.
Excuse me?
Item 5.21.
Yes, ma'am. All right, item 5.1 has been, all right, excuse me, thank you.
Stephen?
Got a little ahead of ourselves here. Let's vote on consent calendar. Trustee Jay, please. On the consent calendar. Thank you, sir. All right, the consent calendar balance is approved. Item 5.1, it is, my understanding, on page nine, under item 6.1, that there's an error there? Does anybody, okay, what, would someone like to amend this item? What is the error? Does anybody want to amend it? Chancellor Matter?
We have found that on page nine, under 6.1, where it says, "On a motion made by trustee Jay and seconded by trustee Williams, the resolution was approved on a 5 to 2 vote," it should say, "on a 7 to 0 vote," and delete the rest of the language there.
All right.
Move approval as amended.
Stephen?
Anyone have a problem with that amendment? Especially Lang and Milchek are to clarify. All right, very good. Then as amended, it's moved for approval. Let's vote. All right, matter carries unanimously. Item 5, 7, 8, 9, and 10...
Move approval. The student pulled class...
22. 21. All right. 5.7, 8, and 9, any objections to taking them in a group?
No.
Hearing none, we'll consider all four of them together. Trustee Milchek, your...
I'm sorry, no, please separate 5 and 9.
Oh, okay. Then let's separate 5, 9, and we'll begin with 5, 7, 8, and 10. And trustee Milchek, you had an issue with this.
I just wanted to ask, perhaps Brandy, what these, what is this changes to the village expansion project? I am going to approve it, but I just want to know what the changes are in concept and design. Thank you.
Okay, the change is that the contractor walked off of the job site, and so we've had to go to the surety. The surety will, is now going through a bid process to get us a new contractor. We're expecting to hear from them anytime this week, and we'll be moving forward. We've lost about four to six weeks in the project to date, and may lose a little bit more as we're getting the new contractor onboard.
So you're, the main problem you have is you're getting a new contractor, but you're not changing the scope of the project or the design of the project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you, that's the only question I had. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on 5, 7, 8, and 10? All right, let's vote on 5.7, 8, and 10. Matter carries unanimously, and 5.9 was pulled by trustee Milchek to answer that question, but trustee Lang has an issue with it. Of, oh, very good. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
A move approval.
All right, moved and seconded, and let's vote on the item. All right, matter carries with one abstention. Item 514 has been pulled by trustee Padberg, and this is the replacement page, it's the pollution legal liability policy.
Yes, if you could just announce in its place what the carrier is, as opposed to the one that's actually published.
The carrier is, on the replacement page, Chartis Specialty Insurance Company, and that is the company that's on exhibit A, and that's the 56-page document following it. Deputy Chancellor Porter?
Just as explanation, the firm that was on the first page, or the first agenda item, is a subsidiary of Chartis.
Oh.
They, we got a call today from Chartis saying they were going to issue the policy, not the other, not the subsidiary.
Oh, I see.
So all we're doing is changing that name, and the policy will be identical, the price will be the same.
Okay, thank you.
Move approval.
Moved and seconded, let's vote. And the matter carries unanimously. And the student trustee has removed 5.21.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion on the item? All right, seeing no discussion, I assume this is for purposes of staining, let's go ahead and vote on the item. And the matter carries unanimously with an abstention. Thank you all very much. We are at item 6.1, which is what has kept the audience glued to their seats. There's a motion to approve by trustee Jay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Padberg, and I will start with the chancellor.
Andram Dean Dixie Bullock, former president of Saddleback College, has put together a binder on the board request for information from trustee Padberg, which was provided previously, and I assume all trustees have it. And Dean Bullock has put together a brief PowerPoint presentation to highlight some of the information that has been presented in the binder, and following that, board can discuss and vote on this item, one way or the other. Thank you.
All right, and while this is being prepared, oh, trustee Lang? Or, okay. Quick point of clarification, because some of the comments that I heard during public comments don't entirely match my understanding of the item, and I guess I'll ask administration, the request here is not to prohibit the making of particular film projects that are already permitted under existing guidelines, it merely is to not broadcast on channel 39 or 33 certain projects that might otherwise already have been broadcast. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's just what's broadcast, not what's made?
The part of it that's on what's made has to do with an expansion of the advisory committee.
All right, thank you. With that, proceed.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to say good evening, and it's nice to be here again. And I'd also like to first introduce, you've met a lot of our students, I'd like to introduce the two faculty members that are here, Professor Hiro Konishi, who's the department chair this year.
Welcome.
And Professor Julie Jenner, is okay? Okay. Brady Jenner. Long-term faculty member. I'd like to show you this PowerPoint that we've done and to take sort of bullet points from the, from the proposal that you got earlier. This first slide shows that we have cinema, television, and radio. In fact, there'll be some change of names of things in the fall coming up. To let you know about those, the cinema is involved very heavily in film festivals. Our television productions are on Cox Channel 39. And the radio, of course, you're probably familiar with, our award-winning KSBR FM These communication arts programs offer degrees and certificates. They offer both associate in arts degrees and associate in science degrees. We have certificates in six special, specific areas, one in cinema, one in television, one in radio, one in post-production, a newly approved program from the state, critical studies, and the last is screen acting and voice performance. Nine of our courses are transferable to the University of California as electives, and 11 courses transfer to California State Universities. I have a listing of those courses, if any of you are interested, you'll also find them in your manual. This is an organization chart that is how the Communication Arts Department is organized. The Hiro Konishi is the interim chair for the, for the cinema and for television, and Terry Widdell, of course, is the radio operations director. And Terry Waddell, of course, is the radio operations director. You'll notice that there are three full-time faculty, and I counted them today. I think there's 12 associate faculty. One of the things that is quite... We're quite involved in this year, and you heard a little bit about accreditation. Student learning outcomes have become an emphasis of accreditation throughout the United States. Because of this, our academic centers have been very heavily involved in getting faculty to write student learning outcomes for every course in the college. So the student learning outcomes that we have three in the... In this Communication Arts programs. The first one is that 70% of the Communication Arts students would score 70% or higher on the comprehensive exams and the production classes at the end of the semester. On the bottom of that slide, you can see that 79.3% of the students meet that SLO. We think that's a great percentage. The second student learning outcome is that 70% of the graduates... Oh, and by the way, just for your information, 70% is considered sort of a benchmark. 70% of the graduates of the COM Arts program have done a project on a reel to demonstrate their skills in the field they are interested. 85.7% of the students meet student learning outcome number two. Number three, 70% of the responding students for a survey feel confident and ready for a job market, are transferring to a four-year institution in the cinema, TV, radio discipline, based on the skills and knowledge they gained in our classes. And of those, 92.2% of the students meet that student learning outcome, number three. Later on in the presentation, we will show you about the students that actually are working in the field and those that have transferred to other institutions. The access and productivity to courses, enrollments have grown steadily since the program was started. And this is just the last five years. The... In 2005, we had a census, a first census enrollment of 733 students, as compared to the 2009 enrollment of 1,340 students. And as you can see on the right there, that the students per section have increased from the 33.3 to 36.2. Some of the variance there is because as we offer more advanced courses, we have to limit the number of students in those courses. So where you see some variation, that's why you're seeing that. This is just a chart indicating the increase in enrollment and where that really started up drastically. And this one is the number of full-time equivalent faculty that also goes up, of course, as you have more students, you have to have more faculty. There was a request, when the report was requested, to have 10 years of the information on the budget. That information was passed out to you today in this form, because at the time that we did the report for you, that wasn't available. It's been very difficult to do because the money and the expenses come from so many different parts and places, and also because the... It's this Communication Arts has been in fine arts division, back to tech and applied science division, back to the fine arts division. So it's really hard to track when it's like that. But our budget manager, Carol Hilton, has done a fine job of that. So you will see, this first slide is the general fund and other funds that are kind of a conglomerate of different funds. The next slide is what we did was we... Because it wouldn't fit any other way where you could read it, we separated it so that the top... The first slide of the top two that you see on your list and the second slide of the bottom ones. The important... Well, I guess they're all important, but to let you know that the final total for these last three years that we did here go from 1,003... Excuse me. 1,377,000 to over... I mentioned earlier that students feel that they're ready to be employed. Recent employment with Cox Communications, that was mentioned earlier by one of the speakers. Fox Sports West, Station KDOC, Station KOCE, a firm in Irvine, Red Digital Cinema, The Dr. Phil Show, and freelance crew for filmmakers. Recent film awards, these are some... Only a few of the awards that we've received from the documentaries and films that our students have made. Recent transfers, and I won't read that long list because you can read them, and you'll see that we have had students transferring to institutions throughout the state. I had a young man that came to my office the other day to interview me. I knew his grandmother, and so he needed to talk to someone about what the economics were doing to the community colleges. So he came to my office. And he was a student ready to graduate from San Diego State University. And he told me that he had taken the Communication Arts program here at Saddleback College, and that he felt that it was better than what he had received after he transferred on. So... And those are the kind of stories that we love to hear, and you've heard some of them Some of the successes that we've had and things that we've done. We have an annual Saddleback College Youth Film Festival for high school and middle school students, and you heard one of the faculty members from a middle school. We had a week-long summer workshop with instructors of those schools. We have school visits, we have class observation, and all of this has been provided by a grant. The grant application was in collaboration with the high schools in our catchment area. And are there any questions?
Well, I bet there are. Trustee Lang?
Yes. My comments are really more in the nature of not questions regarding your presentation. Thank you very much for all of that information, but more regarding the motion that's before us tonight. I'm sort of interested in... This has been put forth as a recommendation from the chancellor, so I'm very interested to understand a little bit about why this recommendation is being made specifically. I think my inherent feelings are much the same as the sentiments that I've heard from the people that have spoken to us tonight. And so I'm going to need a very good reason, I think, to support the recommendation that you're making on this item. And I'll have... I'd like to reserve and make a few further comments after I've gotten some answers to that question.
Go ahead. Sure.
As you know, trustee Padberg had requested information on this agenda item, and the board has supported that request for information. The concern... I'm going to address the first part of the recommendation first, and then the second part of the recommendation. And the concern was as to what standards we are using in advising students, working with the students, in developing film products, and broadcasting them on our channels, particularly Channel 39 here at Salbeck College. And it was a recommendation from President Burnett after he reviewed the program and the products, that considering the taxpayer dollars that we spend on the program, that a PG rating will be appropriate. So in that regard, I'm supporting the college president's recommendation, consistent with board concerns and reflecting community interests. The second part of the recommendation has to do with some concerns that we had heard about from community members about the programs that were broadcast on Channel 39. And the question was, what process do we have in terms of checks and balances in offering these... This kind of program? This is a career technical education-type program where people get jobs as they complete the certificate or degree program. As it was pointed out by speakers and also by Dean Bullock, that students are successful in getting jobs after they complete the program. But to the extent that there are concerns about any career technical education program that we offer, we by law have to have a program advisory committee. And what the college's recommendation was, that we broaden the composition of their program advisory committee so that there is wider input and recommendations to the faculty who oversee the curriculum and develop the program and work with these students in developing their products and so forth. So I would like to make it very clear that the second part of the recommendation is not designed to fringe the academic freedom or speech rights of the students in particular, but to make sure that faculty and students are working with as wide of an input from the advisory committee members as possible. So that has the need for this recommendation, and President Burnett can speak to it. He recommended this, and I concur.
I think you did a nice job, chancellor, frankly. So unless there are any other questions, I don't think I'd add much more.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Lang, you have to come back and make a few comments. I certainly have no problem with the second part of the recommendation of, you know, having wider community input. Certainly, I wouldn't want to see the committee stacked to represent any particular ideological viewpoint regarding restricting the kinds of films, but certainly if it's not currently representative of community interests, I think that that's a worthwhile effort. I am opposed, however, to, I guess, imposing the condition that only those films, I guess, that have a rating of PG or lower, I guess it would be, be aired on that channel, that does smack of censorship to me. I certainly think that it has some... Could have some negative implications in terms of students' willingness to be involved in this kind of program. I could see some very negative impacts regarding accreditation associated with this kind of recommendation. And I would offer that before we would move ahead with that sort of thing. Those would be the kinds of things, as well as the kind of concerns that you've heard tonight, ought to be further vetted before we make a rash decision that I think could have some very negative implications upon this institution. And... Based on that, I'd ask, first of all, that the recommendation be separated into two separate items, and that, secondly, I intend to oppose the first part of this recommendation.
All right. We'll clearly divide the question, and trustee Padberg is next.
Well, before I make my comments, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting for half an hour. Normally, we are supposed to cease our meeting at 9:00, since it's 10 minutes before that.
Second motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention's matter carries unanimously.
Okay. I asked for this item to be brought. I appreciate all the hard work that went into it, and it's a very thorough... It came first as a report, and now it's an action item. I just want to clarify a couple of things. I think that the increase in budget, as I can tell, is related to the increase in student enrollment in the program. But I'd like any other comments or ideas that you may have about why the budget has increased by $100,000, $200,000 each year. And I think that in terms of trustee Lang's comments, there's always been, as my understanding, there's always been a restriction on what Channel 39 can air, according to Cox's rules, and that, I believe, has been PG 13. I don't believe the films that have been made have held to that standard. Many of them have been well beyond and stretched to that PG 13. We have had complaints from citizens about the quality... Not all of the films. I'm not meaning to say that. And let me make it real clear that I've had a family member go through this program very successfully and make a very active, successful career in the communication arts field. So I'm well aware of this program for a long time. However, if we have that kind of problem, we have to address it, and that's what this is about. And in terms of restricting, there are... That's what the rating system is. Now, the rating system in the real world is made up of a special committee. We have an artificial world, if you will, here, and so we have to address that. I think we could have been sanctioned, frankly, by the real world, by some of the material that was put out. It certainly did not meet the PG 13 rating. If I'm wrong about any of these assumptions, I'd like to hear it from the staff or from our dean or our president.
I'll start. To your question of why the budget has increased, if you'll notice, a lot of it has to do with the... Both the special projects and... Am I in the wrong place?
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay. Sorry. A lot of it has to do with the special projects, which are very from year to year, and the amount of foundation, particularly over the last five years. So it's not... Has not been general fund money. For the most part, it's been grants, and, like I said, foundation money that's usually earned by both KSBR and Channel 39, so... Okay. Somebody asked. And I'm sorry, the last part of your question had to do with the ratings?
Right. The ratings in the past, and that these are, in fact, in place already.
The rating that we had been operating under was PG 13, and it was reduced to PG.
And is that rating something imposed by us?
It's imposed by us.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I will support the item.
Trustee Milchek.
I have several questions. One is... Well, first, I have a comment, that my son actually... My eldest son took a class from Terry Waddell in the Communication Arts Department, and it was an excellent class, and he transferred to Harvard and thought it was better than many of his classes at Harvard. So I... And my other comment is that discussing the conference I went to, where you have to judge a program on student success, this is a vocational program where you can see people are getting jobs after they completed this program. And the two important missions of the community college mission are transfer education and vocational or technical education. And if these students are getting jobs and their films are being successful and being accepted into different film festivals, and this is... This is an example of a program that's creating student success and creating jobs in the community, and that's the program I'd like to support. I'd like to know if there is a restriction from Cox on how... What the rating is for our programs? I'd like to know how this... The program... How the Communication Advisory Committee is being broadened? Who are the additional people that are being put on the committee? I know that all of our vocational programs need to have an advisory committees ordinarily from people in that particular field, you know? So these are ordinarily people in that particular field that would advise our faculty, what is the best education that students need to go out into the community and get a job and work successfully in the community. I have one more comment. As I know that most of the 39... Channel 39 programs are played late at night... late at night and all of our students are, are adults, at least 18 or over. And PG 13 means that they, they, anyone 13 years of age or older is, is allowed to watch the program. And I really don't see a problem why we need to decrease it from PG 13 to PG because I Thank you.
Trustee Milchiger, I think I'll take number one and three. How's that?
I'm going to have Dean Dixie do number two. First, your question regarding Cox Communications. Cox Communications does not have a standard for us on any of our, on our cable channels that includes Channel 33 as well. However, Cox Communications has stated that the generally accepted rating, if you have to do it on the movie, was more of like a PG 13, PG rating. So that is, what we're doing is very consistent with what Cox Communications' expectations are of cable channels. First, but note, it was said earlier by the Cox representative, that actually each program is usually rated. It's not the overall channel, it's the rating. That actually is a good inroad into your third question and that was regarding late night programming. Most, in fact, all of the student productions that were more on the, as, as Trustee Padberg noted, pushing the PG 13 level, were actually, were at late night between 1:00 and 4:00 AM or so. However, there were concerns from the community members from some of those, those productions. I should note that as Dean Bullock had mentioned, we have already ourselves implemented leaning back our programming to more of a PG, you might say, on those late night programs to about many months ago. And we have not heard any feedback at all, actually, bad or good or anything for that matter. So it has been quite successful.
Thank you.
Yes, and your, your other question which had to do with the advisory committee? The advisory committee currently is primarily people from the industry. And we were thinking to broaden it perhaps with a, a couple of community members and or, and/or students so that we could get that, the perspective of what we're doing before we get there. It's a recommendation body to the faculty.
How, how, how do the people in, in the department feel, feel about broadening the committee in, in this way?
I spoke with Professor Carnesei and he didn't have any trouble with broadening the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Williams.
Well, good evening. I've been thinking about this item a great deal. I generally oppose the item, the first part of the item. The second part of the item, as far as reconfiguring the committee, I don't have a problem with that as long as it's a broad-based committee. For those of the students here in the audience, I graduated from Saddleback College and then went to the University of Iowa. I'll give you the year Saddleback, 1971, so it's been a long time. Pardon my voice. But when I went to the University of Iowa, had a friend on the track team who was a journalism broadcast major and he told me, you know, you've got some elective courses you can take in your upper division, your final two years, and you ought to look at, you know, just for the fun of the broadcasting, mass communications, they called it back then. I took a course in mass communications, which was the print media, radio and television. And the internet, which is another medium of communication now, didn't exist probably except in the minds of Bill Gates and Steve Jobs. So I took another course in broadcasting and it was the documentary film. And I recall the name of the professor, Richard Dyer McKen, you can Google him, University of Iowa. He turned out to be an award-winning faculty member, big in the film industry. And I learned more about World War II, post-World War I, World War II, history, I think, in the documentary film class than I learned in history courses because of all of the propaganda films that were produced by the United States, Germany, and both sides trying to sell the war to their people. It was just fascinating. One class, Frank Capra was a guest speaker. I got to the classroom, walked in and I, my God, the auditorium's full. It was all the faculty on campus heard Frank Capra was going to be speaking and the students barely had room. But it was wonderful. He directed Clark Gable, John Wayne, I mean, you can, you can Google Frank Capra Sr., this was the father, the little boy and the whole thing. But in studying the, if you will, the communications, the film industry, first of all, I think the filmmakers have a responsibility, those that broadcast the films have a responsibility, if it's on television or in the theaters, journalists certainly, certainly have a responsibility. But to this, this issue here tonight, I'm very uncomfortable with this board taking this action. We've heard from the speakers that they're going to employ the common sense approach, which I think is the best approach. And what really comes to mind is just last week, our U.S. Supreme Court made a ruling and it was on the McCain-Fingold bill. It had to do with campaign financing, which really had to do with suppression of free speech by a certain segment in America. And the court ruled that was unconstitutional. And even the members of Congress who voted for this bill years ago, at the time they voted for it, said, you know, we think this has some elements that are unconstitutional and we probably shouldn't vote for it, but let's pass this thing and let the Supreme Court sort it out. Well, looking at this tonight, I don't think we should be sitting here saying, well, we think 6.1 agenda item has some elements that might be unconstitutional and let a higher court sort it out. I think that's bad policy. I think this board should leave this alone. We've heard from the people that do this, that they're going to employ a responsible method of determining what they broadcast. So I'm going to, I'm going to oppose the first part of the item, which is to regulate what I think is an expression by our students. This will be very damaging and it will be a deterrent to draw students to this college. And the second part, if you're going to expand the committee, I don't have a problem with it. Thank you.
Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I've heard some, some conflicting information presented this evening that gives me cause for pause and I would like to get a little clarity before we move forward. First, let me say that I do think that a division of this question is appropriate, Dave, and, and we can address those two issues, give comfort to the board in doing so. Dixie, I want to know that, I want you to know and the audience to know that, that you give me comfort knowing that you've been on top of this and getting into it in the detail that you have and, and to Todd, the seriousness with which you have addressed this, because I know it has taken time and energy and I commend both of you for the report and thoroughness. Folks, I don't know if you, you know, we get reports of, of this magnitude to read, which shows that a lot of thought and, and effort has, has gone into this. The issue of funding, I have a sheet here that, that shows that the communication arts 10-year history in 1999, 2000 was $631,000. And in 2008, '09, $1,643,000. So to me, that's a growth of three times. Am I, am I misreading something, Dixie?
No, I, I think you're reading it correctly.
Right.
It's due to a number of factors. As you saw, there are tremendous increase in the number of students,
Right.
Which means an increase in faculty and staff.
Right.
There are, just the normal increase in cost of everything. This is an expenditure model.
Mm-hmm.
And then as I said, a lot of it, we didn't have the money to, to spend back in 1999, 2000, but since then have written grants, have, have done more fundraising ourselves. And it's just a combination of those three and probably some other factors as well.
Right. But, but I think what needs to be said is that in this 10 years, it has tripled and that is a demonstration of the consistency of this board and its commitment to the program. You know, follow the money, folks, follow the money.
Yes, sir.
We have, we have made a very definitive, ongoing commitment to this program and there's nothing by way of short shrift, so that we take this issue seriously and carefully should not be argued. Trustee Padberg initiated this concern, this issue. She brought it to us because of some very serious complaints, contacts, voicing from the community. I'm always troubled by the way the word "community" is used and what we look to, to demonstrate the voice and who is the community. To me, the community is the 1 million people that reside between Irvine and Tustin down to San Clemente. It's not just those in this room or those on these two campuses, three campuses. It's, it's all the people, especially the taxpaying members of the community. I did not read this proposal as a challenge to what is done by the students and produced in the classroom. I'm not interested in doing that job. That job belongs to the teachers, the administrators, to give guidance to our students. And I think they do a fine job overall. I think that academic freedom and the initiatives taken on our campuses make us among the finest of community colleges in California. What I heard was the initiative of Trustee Padberg from the beginning as to what is broadcast by this district as an image of this district to the people of that 1 million person community. I think those are two very different things. And I think things could be produced that aren't necessarily broadcast. And, and I think we need to clarify that as to what exactly we're trying to achieve here. As to the issue of the film program advisory committee, it comes back again to our vision of community. When I heard, to my surprise, I must admit, that the advisory committee constitutes people in and of the program or in the industry, in a community college, that's not right. None of our advisory committees should be confined to any special interests, any special group. They should be very broadly based of all the community. So I would vigorously support a broadening of the review committee to involve people of leadership and sensitivity in the community. And as for the first part of this, I would perhaps like to see a refinement of the recommendation and to take a little further time to look at it. Thank you.
I'm going to jump in. I haven't spoken to it yet and then I know Professor Cosgrove would like to speak. First of all, I'd like to second a lot of what I just heard from Trustee Fuentes and make it clear that this is not an effort to get into at all what shows up in the classroom, only what shows up on the community access television station. And it's important to note that it is a community access television station owned by this college and serving that broad sense of community that Trustee Fuentes talked about. While Trustee Milchiger is undoubtedly correct that our students are adults, it is utterly undeniable that folks other than our students have access to that community station and those folks can be of all ages, all levels of maturity and, and what we need do is take seriously our responsibility when reaching out to them as opposed to what we do actually in the classroom. And so I am not as troubled that there is supposed censorship because I see none. I'm not as troubled by focusing on the PG as opposed to PG 13 rating. But I do want a clarification from something I heard from Dean Bullock. I thought, well, I've, I've quoted you as saying here, and I don't know if I heard you correctly, but that in fact, we have reduced to PG what we are broadcasting.
Yes.
Is that the case? And if so, what's the point of this item or what's the opposition to this item since it merely reflects, or at least the first part, merely reflects ongoing practice?
It has been reduced about a month, month and a half ago, two months?
Several months.
But after the November report.
And who's been stifled?
Not anybody that I know of.
Okay.
And, but the idea of the item was to formalize it.
All right. Okay, but it is current practice PG, not PG 13?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I, could I also say too, before you vote, that Professor Brady Jenner has also said that she is fine with the, the added members for the advisory committee.
Good, okay. And Professor Cosgrove, let me go to you now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, President Rehner. I'm glad that we are funding this program at a threefold rate because it's been a successful program and who doesn't want success, especially in career technical areas? One of the concerns I've had, and it's been a little bit abated here by some of the comments, is that we sometimes have the consequences of unintended consequences. And one of the concerns that really troubled me was what impact would this have on accreditation? After six years of struggling with this stuff, I don't want to see us spend a couple hundred thousand dollars more on something that is, is something that really not an issue. And secondly, if this did become an issue and we were dinged on this, I think that the Board of Trustees or the district should pay that portion of what it's going to cost us next year to do a progress report. I mean, I heard people talk about responsibility, well, people have to step up to the plate if it's your responsibility. The college does not control certain things that the Board of the District does and yet we are the ones affected by it and our students are hurt by it. We've taken a lot of faculty members and staff out of classrooms, out of their normal duties for the last six years working on these things. I don't want to see us jeopardize that.
Trustee Padberg.
I think that what we've heard here tonight is that the college has been extremely responsible in responding to a problem that apparently they were unaware of and that has been pointed out to them. I am very comfortable with that. I don't know, I think perhaps Mr. Cosgrove, you were talking about the fact that it should be something that the college does and in fact, that's what's happened. The college hasn't censored, they've become responsible and that's a part of education. And I am very pleased with what they've said. And with that, I would be, I would be, I will make a motion for the first part of this recommended action to table that and to review this for the next year and see how things go. But the second part, to broaden the committee structure, I think should go forward.
Is that a motion to table?
That is.
Is there a second to the motion to table the first part of the question?
First part of the recommendation.
First part of the recommendation.
With respect to the PG rating? Motion, motion to table that so there'll be no action on that tonight?
Right.
Second motion.
All right, moved and seconded. That's a non-debatable motion and let's vote on tabling that recommendation at this point. And the matter is tabled on a four to three vote with a student advisory yes vote. So that part of the recommendation is gone. The second part of the recommendation is to broaden the, as I understand it, is to broaden the committee.
And I'll make a motion to broaden the committee.
All right, and is there a second to that motion?
All right.
Moved and seconded. Is there further discussion on, on I guess part B of the recommendation?
Move to amend. I'd just like to have that to recommend to broaden and to report back to the board so that we might be informed.
I have no problem with it. No problem with it.
The maker of the motion has no problem with it, so as amended, any further discussion? All right, let's vote on that item. And that matter carries unanimously. We are at 6.2.
Point of order.
Sir?
We're five minutes away from the continuous.
We went to 9:30.
Oh, she said a half hour.
No, 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 I said till 9:30. I said 9:30.
Understood, 9:30.
Move approval.
All right. All right, let's, discussion, seeing none, we'll vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.3, non-resident tuition fees.
Move approval.
Moved and one of you are a second and I'll let those folks sort it out. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I'm sorry. My question on this one was, recommendation for the capital outlay fee, I think was $25. $25. But then somewhere else I saw that, I don't remember, it was something like a formula provided for half of the, of the non-resident tuition processing fee, which would be $27. And so I was just a little, I guess, confused about that. Perhaps Deputy Chancellor Portner might comment about that?
We have the latitude to set it wherever we want. And we thought that in this economy, in this situation, we wouldn't raise the fee. Is that your question?
Yes, I think so. All right. But that portion of the fee also is, you know, capital outlay projects, of which we have significant ones. I guess my question would be, is how much would we even be talking about in terms of an extra $2, a pretty minimal?
I don't know the amount offhand, but I think so.
Okay. That's fine. Let it go then.
All right. Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. 6.4, sabbatical recommendations.
Move the item.
Is there a second discussion? Yes, sir.
Turning to, let's see, page, well, they're not numbered. Yes, they are. Page nine of 16. Professor Hewitt, Bill Hewitt. This is for sabbatical, a year away. I was under the impression that the year that Bill had up in Sacramento, working on that project, I thought that was covered under sabbatical. Am I mistaken?
Yes.
What was that?
That was not a sabbatical. That was released time, reassigned time, but it was not.
But not covered, not covered within the context before of sabbatical leave?
Not my understanding.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on the item? Has it been moved?
Yes, I moved it.
All right. And, all right. Well, you can't do both. Let's vote on it. Matter carries unanimously. 6.5, Board of Directors' nominations. Any nominations we'd like to make? Seeing none, we're at item 6.6.
Mr. President. Comment? This organization, CCCCT, you know, we don't have much interest in it, and I don't see that they do much good for us. They're an advocate of bigger spending. They're an advocate of tax and spend. We don't even have an interest to participate in the election of the Board by nomination, or we don't have much contact. I'm wondering if maybe we could turn to District Administration to give us a reevaluation of this, that we could take a look, see, and what does this cost us a year to belong to? You know, off the top of the head?
Well, Chancellor. Let me say that CCCCT is part of CCLC, California Community College League. And I believe we pay them, I'm just taking a guess, total guess, it's $15,000, $16,000 a year. And they have two organizations. One is this trustee organization, and they also have a CEO organization. So with the consensus from the Board, if there's interest, part of the Board, we'll be happy to provide you a report on benefits that we derive for the money that we pay them.
Well, I think that year after year, we do this in a rubber stamp way. We, you know, re-sign up for these groups. I read the reports that come over the email. Some of it is just nothing but rah-rah. I'm wondering if maybe we ought to have a good, close look, see if there's a benefit to spending that level of dollars on this membership.
We'll have Administration get back to us on that. Oh, I'm sorry. Two more speakers. My apologies. Trustee Padberg.
Well, I have attended many CCCCT meetings, and I find it to be a very valuable group. I'd like to suggest that Trustee Fuentes go to one of their meetings and see, after personal experience, what he thinks. It is a part of the league, and I think we should support the league. I think if you have an issue that you need to work within their structure and try and make it better, I think this election, most of these people we don't even know, none of our trustees ever run for office, but I think it's unfair to try and judge an organization by this particular item. I only know a couple of them from Walt Howard, and I forget, I guess he's from, what, Santa Ana?
Orange Coast.
Coast, Orange Coast, okay. But I'm not prepared, really, to vote on any of the others. So I'm happy to just table this item or move on. But I do find it a very important organization and would oppose moving away from it.
Well, Mr. President, what I was suggesting, that we get information, then we can make that as an informed decision without prejudices.
I agree. It's important that that information can come back to us. Trustee Williams.
Well, I would point out, we just approved another year's membership in the Community College League via the consent calendar tonight. And Trustee Melchiker just returned from the league conference this past weekend. They're a worthy organization. Not everything they do, I think, is in our favor. I think they're not all the biggest fans of basic aid districts, but I certainly would encourage a reevaluation. A lot of what they put out is pretty good stuff. Chancellor Mather and I participated in the Capitol Days last year and the year before, I believe, walking the floor of the legislature, pardon me, the floor is not in the hall, they're in the legislative body. But we've gone to their events, we've talked to legislators on behalf of community colleges and our colleges in specific. So I think it's a good organization. I don't agree with everything they do, though.
And let me jump in. I'd be curious, in that report, what alternative organization or organizations exist, if any, and what numbers of our sister or brother community college districts belong or don't belong? Trustee Lang.
Yes, just a couple of points. I know Trustee Padberg mentioned tabling was sudden, but there's no reason to table. It's either we do have a candidate or we don't have a candidate that we're going to offer. I do think that there are some reasons why we may want to continue our membership in CCCCT, but I think it's worthwhile certainly hearing what those reasons are. And one possibility also might be to get some input from Walt Howell, who I notice is the first VP from Coast, who may be willing to provide us with some input along those lines about what are the benefits of this organization. So certainly worthwhile request.
Thank you. Trustee Melchiker.
I don't mind looking into it at all. I'm a member of one of the, there's a number of committees connected with this. CCCCT is California Community College Trustees. So it's the one organization with all the community college trustees in the state in it. So every, all the 72 districts in the state of California are all members of it, and all the trustees in the state are members of it. And this would be the voice of all the trustees. So if any of the trustees have a problem with it, there are internal mechanisms to discuss it within the organization. One of the things that, as I mentioned, our committee does is to put on this effective trustee workshop, which they do every year in January after the new trustees are elected, to tell the trustees all about the Brown Act and tell them, teach them how to be an effective trustee. And that's followed by the legislative workshop, which I like to go to sometimes. I didn't go to it this year. And that, what that is, is it teaches all the trustees about the legislation affecting all the community colleges, and then you spend the next day going to the legislators' offices and lobbying them. So I myself think it's a very valuable organization, but I don't mind looking into it. Thank you.
Trustee Padberg.
Yes, considering the hour, I'll make a motion to extend the meeting for 15 minutes. Maybe we can do it in 10 to 9:45.
Second the motion.
Thank you.
To 9:45. All in favor? Opposed? Extension's matter carries unanimously. Trustee Fuentes.
Mr. President, earlier in this meeting, we turned to our community, and we asked one and all, faculty, administration, students, and community, to help us find cost savings in this district. When we receive reports on all campuses, on both campuses, I think it would be very good to have a report that we might begin at home. This is strictly a trustees organization. Let us begin with a intelligent review. All I have asked for is a report from Administration so that we might look at this and let us be an example that we can take a look at things that first affect us as we are asking all elements to look at costs that affect them.
Trustee Padberg.
I would second that. There's no reason not to look at things closely. So I don't know if you need to bring a request for a report, or if we can do it with this just, this agenda item, but I would certainly approve that.
Chancellor.
I've already indicated, I've already indicated that I'll be happy to provide that report.
Item 6.6 is board policy revisions. Here for approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve. There's a motion. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Trustee Lang.
To ask about Board Policy 3340, which is the policy regarding cell phones and smartphone allowances. That policy provides that reimbursement to trustees for an amount not to exceed $65 per month. And my question is how this policy is actually working in practice. Are we reimbursing for the full amount of somebody's cell phones that they're submitting to the district? Or are we reimbursing only for business calls that are made up to the $65? I'm just interested in understanding a little bit better. And also, does that cover this hands-free device that we talked about that we're encouraging as well? So if anybody could answer that, I'd appreciate it.
Who can answer? I'll go to the Deputy Chancellor.
First of all, there are no trustees who have cell phones that we pay for.
Okay. Well, then.
That was easy.
Yeah, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
All right. Trustee Melchiker. Okay. Very good. Anything else on this item? It is moved for approval. Let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.7, more board policy revisions, and these are for review and study.
Move to approve for review and study.
Deputy Chancellor.
This is, just as a note for board information, that in this group, there is some policy here for Transfer Center. And apparently, at the board policy meeting this past Friday, I didn't happen to be there because I was ill, there was some discussion about revising this policy, and it's been referred back to the presidents. It's quite possible that it's going to come back to you as it is. I'm just letting you know that it might change. An advantage of approving it tonight is then if it is going to come back as it is, we don't have to bring it back again for review and study. We're ready to go. If it's determined by the presidents they want some changes, we'll bring that back for review and study also.
Okay. All right. It's for review and study. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.8, academic personnel action items. All right. It's here for approval. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.9, classified personnel action items.
Move the item.
And it's been moved. I believe there's an amendment to be made.
There is one change in item A1K. We'd like to change the date from January 16th to January 15th on that item. It's on page two.
Okay. Moved with that amendment. I didn't hear a second. Moved and seconded. As amended, discussion? All right. Let's vote on it. Matter carries unanimously. 6.10. Second. Discussion? Let's vote. 7.1, information items in the seven series. 7.1, questions, comments. Seeing none. Item 7.2 is our basic aid report, information item. Seeing no questions. Let's go to 7.3, Facilities Plan Status Report. Trustee Lang. I moved very quickly, and I frankly don't remember seeing that. Are you on, I'm on 7.3, but if we want to go to 7.2, because I moved quickly and didn't see when you pressed your button.
I, yes. My comment really. My apologies. Let's go back to 7.2. And I was hoping that on 7.2, that we might think about a little change in the format of this report unless it poses some major problems. And that is, it seems to me that what we do, and I think we've talked about this before, is that we lump all of the unspent money in our 0910 column, which really doesn't give us a fair picture of what we're really planning on spending during the current fiscal year. And it seems to me we'd be better, perhaps, in creating a separate column that shows, you know, what are we planning on spending in 0910 versus what are we, what are we planning on spending in future years?
They're making notes, so look for that next month. Seeing no problem with that. Let's go to 7.3, which is the Facilities Plan Status Report. And I see no one who wants to speak on that. 7.4 is just our list of board requested reports. 7.5, the monthly financial status report. 7.6, the quarterly financial status report. We're going to make 9:45. And 7.7, the quarterly financial status report. Thank you. It is two different time periods. There we go. And finally, 7.8, which is the retiree trust fund. Trustee Lang.
On 7.8, I was hoping that perhaps we might add to the status section some commentary regarding what kind of, the adequacy of that fund relative to future obligations to the extent that we, we know it, we know what that is, based on whatever current actuarial information that we have.
First of all, the answer to your question is sure. Good answer. The best. I just wanted to let you know that we're about to do a new actuarial study. And so that's done, it's going to have to now be done every two years. It used to be done less frequently. So we'll have more current information. We'll bring that back to you. Since I have the floor, I was going to point out to the Board, if you haven't noticed.
I did notice.
What a tremendous recovery this fund has made. If you recall, back a year ago, we were down in $38 million range or so because of the tremendous loss in the markets. And there was some discussion, do we sell or not? Of course, when you sell, you realize your loss as soon as you do that. But we held on, and now we've just about completely recovered everything that we would have had if there had been no drop in the market. So the fund has performed remarkably well.
I did notice that, and congratulations to you and your committee on that.
I wish I could say that I was the person who invested that. These are real experts.
Congratulations for having the courage to hang in there until the market recovered a bit.
Trustee Jay. Trustee Jay.
Yeah, the market was up a little bit today, just a little bit. It went down quite substantially last week. Uh, I'm worried, uh, that perhaps we ought to take some of the money off the table in equities and put it into fixed income stock. Now, however, ahead of the game, uh, now, if the market continues to go up, obviously we're going to come out great, as we have the last year ago, and at that time I was concerned, we had gone into so many equities and stuff this year. If we didn't choose that year, I think we professionally got managing the fund, uh, arranged the split as they best saw fit, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, this is a trust fund. The money that is there is held in trust, and the board nor the members of the retirement board can direct, uh, cannot direct the investments of that fund, and, uh, without jeopardizing your own liability, if there's a loss in the fund, uh, benefits need to be paid. Uh, if there's no money to pay them, they said, you guys made the decision, uh, it's on your back. But instead, we hire professionals to do it. We tell them what the rate of return is that's acceptable for us. They then make decisions of what investments to make to meet that rate of return and with a risk that is tolerant.
I, I understood that before, and that's, that's fine. Trusts are usually movable, however, unless and of course is a, uh, a movable trust, a trust, what do they call it?
Irrevocable?
What's that?
Irrevocable? This is an irrevocable trust.
Irrevocable trust. Well, then, okay, we have to ride with whatever decisions they have. I think that's perhaps something that we would like to correct in the future.
Well, the.
I think your study will find that once again, on, uh, liabilities that we will have, because the last time that this was done was June of, uh, two thousand and seven, I believe, I think, um, that will change, and obviously we'll need another several million dollars to cover the liabilities. Maybe we might, might go with a revocable trust, so we had some input, but anyway.
Well, you've already done the irrevocable one, so that, that decision's over. Um, the only thing we could do, and this is possible, is we could tell our, um, investment people that, uh, we want a lower rate of return, and that we have a lower risk tolerance. That's a possibility. We do have that ability as we, um, oversee the trust. Now, what that would do is cause us to make greater contributions to meet the obligations because at that point, we're not using the earnings from the, uh, from the trust fund investments, uh, to offset some of those contributions.
Okay.
I'll talk to you about it later.
Okay. All right. Trustee Lang.
All right. I'm not sure if I want to weigh in on this at all, uh, further, but understand the concept of what we're dealing with. Essentially, what we've done is we've set up an irrevocable trust, which was, uh, done as a result of, uh, new gasbies that are out there, and, uh, we did that in, uh, in order to, uh, essentially create this, uh, separate fund, of which we've got our financial people of the district basically monitoring the professional money managers that we've hired, and we've provided them with certain guidelines, which you've described. Um, I, I certainly think that we're on the right path. It's a long-term fund. Uh, I'm assuming that you've probably taken into consideration, or they, in some fashion or another, the, of when stage retirements occur, uh, what kind of liquidity there needs to be within the trust in order to satisfy those obligations, uh, how much of that money needs to be invested on a longer-term time horizon, um, and, again, establish certain investment, uh, policies to try us, try and get us where we need to be, and identifying what kind of contributions we're going to need to make along the way to supplement the kind of investment returns that you're anticipating from those funds. And, uh, you know, I think obviously that, that's the right way to go, and, uh, seems to me that we're on track, and you'll continue to report to us on where we're at in terms of achieving our goals, which is to be able to fully fund towards the retirement benefits that we've promised to the employees of this district.
Right. Very good. Item eight. We're here now for our various reports.
Real quick, and I do the time, one thing I am compelled to invite everybody to, on February eighth, in McKinney Theater, at twelve noon, Saddleback College is hosting Rachel's Challenge. Rachel Scott was the first person killed at Columbine High School on April twentieth, nineteen ninety-nine. Her acts of kindness and compassion, coupled with the contents of her six diaries, have become the foundation for one of the most life-changing school programs in America. We're very proud to be hosting it at Saddleback College, twelve noon, February eighth, in McKinney Theater. Hope you come, and anybody else that's listening in our audience is welcome to come as well.
Thank you, sir. President Rockmore.
In the light of time, I'll move through this quickly as well. Uh, all of you received an invitation to come to Wednesday night's, uh, homecoming event at IVC. Uh, this year, the President's Cup, uh, second, second annual, uh, will begin at IVC, and, uh, both teams are, uh, very closely matched, so it should be a very exciting, uh, set of games. And, uh, the men's, uh, team begin at five-thirty, and so it's a good time to arrive and, and begin a very active evening with that. Halftime is going to include an introduction of our, uh, new homecoming king, uh, king and queen. Uh, the second thing is we started the IVC pro, uh, pro-IVC campaign again, uh, through our college foundation. Uh, haven't done this probably for eight years. We had no idea that we were going to get a quarter of a million dollars in pledges, uh, very surprising, and all of those monies are going to go directly to the departments of, at the college. Uh, the college had originally, or the foundation had originally, uh, matched that with thirty thousand, and in the last meeting, they upped that to sixty thousand dollars that they will be contributing. And then finally, if you would like to, uh, see the young folks in our district, uh, and their inventions, that will be Saturday or, uh, twenty-third annual astounding inventions. Uh, most of the festivities beginning around ten o'clock, so everyone's welcome, and hope to see you there.
Thank you. Proleg peoples.
Thank you, President Wagner. Just one brief comment for, for tonight. Just, uh, it'll be an exciting and active semester, uh, working on the development of ATAP, uh, working with both the colleges in the district and ATAP to establish and , uh, compose the members of a new ATAP advisory committee. We hope that the first meeting will be, uh, later in, uh, February, and that will be a focus truly at the development of ATAP, dissemination of information and discussions in order to move that project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. President Allen.
Thank you. Because of the hour, it's, uh, also an abbreviated report. Just first to add to, um, Dr. Rockmore's comments about pro-IVC, I would like to add that the majority of those funds that are raised, uh, were raised by the administration, the faculty and the staff of IVC. And in addition to that, we also received five corporate matching funds, um, generally from, uh, friends or, well, from family members, spouses, uh, of faculty or staff or administrators there. And, yes, we, we, we are putting our money where our mouth is this time, and it's also, uh, been said now to be the largest single fundraiser in the history of IVC, so we're very, very proud of that. Uh, secondly.
Clap, it's late. But that deserves an applause.
It does. It does. And, and one other item, uh, this evening while we've been here, uh, the faculty at IVC have been kicking off, uh, a new tradition, our newest tradition, which is the IVC-to-IVC lecture series, uh, and we have planned six for the spring. I've brought a few handouts if you'd like, uh, if you have an interest in it. It is an in-house lecture series that's designed to provide campus faculty with the opportunity to exchange ideas of interest and research, and the first six range from, uh, meeting the working artists who are our colleagues, to language, to mathematics, to neurobiology, and on to social studies topics. So we invite you, uh, Monday evenings from seven to ten, uh, and it will be six evenings this spring. So thank you.
All right. But you don't get all ten of them.
No.
Why not? Professor Cosgrove.
Um, one comment, uh, I want to commend the Mass Science, uh, Division for their excellent lecture series. Uh, last Friday, they had a Nobel laureate, uh, from chemistry, Dr. Mullis, um, who gave a very provocative, uh, presentation. The, uh, room was filled, standing room only, um, and he challenged, uh, science, or where science is concerned, issues of religious beliefs, political views, cultural values, climate change views, and a number of others. And on my rating list, it would be a PG twenty-three, and I do hope it's aired on Channel thirty-nine.
Professor Hagerty.
Thank you, President Wagner. Uh, just one quick comment, uh, just like to point out that, uh, we're in the third week of the spring two thousand and ten semester, and, um, classes on both campuses are full with, uh, plenty of students because we're getting them from a number of different places. And if you get a chance to, uh, visit campuses, you'll see the faculty heart, and we're meeting all the news, uh, meeting all the needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And Professor Taylor has gone. Professor, uh, President Hamilton.
Do the Allen report tonight.
President May.
No report from CSE or IVC classified senate tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. We stand adjourned in honor of Ron Young and former trustee Joan Hutter. Thank you all.